Good evening, I'm gonna call the Foxborough School Committee meeting to order. A regular meeting up to over 7:00, 7 o'clock. The agenda is as follows. 7 o'clock, visitors. 7:10, approval of minutes. 7:15, teacher and learning highlights. FHS Arts and Culture Club with advisor Sherri Turkot and student members. 7:25, interview finalist for the position of Director of Special Education. Dr. Sandra Einsel. I hope I pronounced that correctly. 7:45, 2012-2013 math curriculum review. Final report. Dr. Amy Burdos, Ms. Sue Carl, and Ms. Allison Mello. 8:10, school committee appointments. Delicate to mass convention. Budget subcommittee, policy subcommittee. 8:15, monthly FY14 budget update. Mr. Yukna. 8:20, MSBA update. 8:30, generator bid funding. 8:40, acceptance of donations. And 8:45, other matters. So, before we start. Perfect timing, by the way. I understand we have some new student representatives, and Ms. Spinelli?
We do. We are very happy to have new student representatives. As you know, our two student representatives graduated this past June. So, we were waiting for the announcement of our new student representative names to the school committee. And we have Colleen McDonald and Ravmir Feday. Did I pronounce your name right, Ravmir?
Feday.
Feday.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, welcome. So, just to give you a little bit of an introduction. So, this is a school committee meeting that meets, as you know, twice a month. It's a really great commitment that the two of you make. And it's an important contribution because everything that the committee does and that we try to do as administrators is for the benefit of students. So, we welcome your input. So, if on an agenda item that you have some interest and you want to contribute, raise your hand in the chair on the meeting and recognizes different people and their input. And sometimes I might look your way, and if it looks like you might be interested in saying something, I might be shy, I might ask you what you think. So, we really appreciate the commitment. It's a really important part of what we do. So, welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Maybe you could tell us just a little bit about yourselves? Not to put you on the spot, but we'd love to learn a little more.
Professor.
Oh, you know what? Hold on just one moment.
Oh, excuse me.
We're gonna get a microphone, so everyone can hear you at home.
Can you get that one, do you think, maybe?
Eventually, we will have one in between the two of you, just like that. Perfect. And one for visitors. Perfect. That works good.
Okay, well, I'm Ravmir Feday. I'm a sophomore. I'm currently this year starting as student council. I'm also a football player. I am involved in the music program. I am in choir, and I am in the a cappella group. And I'm also in yearbook. I am also doing Community Warriors. And I'm just very involved in the school myself, so yeah.
Do you have any time to study?
Late nights, but I still, I make time for it all, so yeah.
That's awesome. Great, welcome.
Thank you.
My name is Colleen. I'm also sophomore at Foxborough. I sing in the chamber choir, the jazz choir, and the women's a cappella. And this is my second year on student council.
Excellent. Wonderful. Welcome.
Very happy to have you.
Yes, very happy.
So, those will be your official seats. So, each meeting you'll sit there, and we always have water ready, and hopefully a microphone will be ready for you next time as well.
And if you have any questions, please feel free at any time to ask them, okay? So, we really appreciate your time, because we can tell you're both very busy individuals. So, we really do appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. So, moving on, we're gonna go to visitors. Do we have any visitors that would like to speak? Yes, please come forward and give us your name.
Hello, my name is Joseph Garrity. And if you saw in the packet, we haven't approved the June 17th executive session minutes.
We're gonna be doing that this evening.
Well, we, I didn't see it in there. I only saw August 5th and 26th.
Oh, that's right. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Oh, okay. Well, we put the minutes in the packet that are ready for approval.
I was just wondering if June 17th was ready.
We have to go with the business that they have in front of them, so...
We will check.
Yeah, we'll take note. Thank you, June 17th.
Okay, well, I don't know if the June 3rd has approved either.
Well, I don't know. Mrs. Gracia keeps track in the office, but we don't bring all of our information to every meeting.
Okay.
So, we'll have to, we'll check on both of those things.
Okay. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Before we move on, may I just introduce Flat Stanley here as a book character from Mr. Rowe's class at the Taylor School, which is an awesome class. Was there this morning. But I've had Flat Stanley for a week. He's been traveling around with me, going to administrative team meetings and other places. And I promised the kids this morning that he would be on TV. And here he is. And then we'll be writing back to the class about his adventures spending the week with me. So, we have lots of different characters. Another of the room's characters left this morning with Representative Jay Barros.
Oh, excellent.
To go on the Hill and do some legislative work. So, I just wanted to make sure that we had him here. Thanks. Thank you.
I know, thank you.
I said he would be on TV.
And we got a nice close-up of him, too.
Yes.
I don't know if you noticed that.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike.
Any other visitors that wish to be recognized? All right, we'll move on to approval of minutes. And the minutes that we have before us are September 16th from our regular meeting. Do we have any additions or revisions on that?
I have none.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. Okay, August 26th, these are the executive session minutes.
Do you wanna do August 5th first, Katie?
Okay, yeah.
Just for...
Mine were out of order. Okay, August 5th, executive session minutes. Any changes, revisions? Okay, do you have a motion to accept?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And motion...
One abstain.
Motion to release those as well.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you. Okay, August 26th, executive session minutes. Do you have a motion?
Motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
One abstain.
Four, approve, one abstain. Motion to...
Someone was in France or something, apparently.
Oh, yeah.
Somewhere.
National Community Theater Festival.
Motion to release, August 26th, minutes approved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, thank you.
I'm glad you let you go away.
Okay. Moving on to teacher and learning highlights, FHS Arts and Culture Club.
Yes. If you were able to notice the display in the display case right outside the Library Media Center, we recently had students from the FHS Arts and Culture Club do an art installation project in Providence. So, I'd like to invite Ms. Turkot and five students who agreed to be here to talk about their project to the visitors' table, as we call it. Thank you so much for being here. We know that it's not like you don't have homework to do or anything, kids. So, from left to right, I'm gonna make sure I have all their names right. So, we have Mike Relva, Anna Noriega, teacher, Sherri Turkot. We have Danielle DeVellis, Amber Daphne, and Carolyn Dorr. So, thank you for being here. We start every school committee meeting with a teaching and learning highlight, something great that kids are doing from any of the schools, or something great that teachers are initiated that's good for kids. So, something that's really a highlight of what we're doing. And we always have the kids who win the scholastic art awards here in the spring. But this is different, because you just had this going on, and it's really about a really exciting project. So, we wanted to have you come early, so we appreciate you giving up your Monday night to do it. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Turkot to explain what it was.
Yes. Well, so I'm Ms. Turkot. This is my second year teaching here at Foxborough High School. And I was lucky enough to become the advisor of the Arts and Cultures Club. And so, to kick off the start of the year, I proposed the idea that we take part in the Providence Street Painting Festival. And this was its 14th year. And I had participated in this event when I was a senior in high school 10 years ago. So, it was really neat to bring a group of students back to that event that I had participated in so long ago. So, it's a full day of artistic expression and artistic appreciation, where hundreds of artists come together in Providence. And it took place within the ice skating rink in downtown Providence to create these chalk paintings on the floor of that ice skating rink. So, leading up to the event, we had designed squares, so designed drawings for the event. So, Dani DeVellis and Amber Daphne were the two designers of our two drawings. So, they started off making their designs on, you know, a small grid, about six inches by six inches in size. And we scaled it up to eight feet by eight feet. So, it was a big process. I don't know if you guys have questions, or if you wanna... Oh, there we are.
So, we have some visuals up that you submitted, so here you are.
So, right there is, you know, pretty much all the students who participated, and that was Dani's design of the whimsical mermaid. So, that was the start of the project. So, we first had to sketch out the idea onto that large grid, and then slowly but surely add color and bring it to life. So, it was a great way for all these students to work together, to work with students that they may not have had the chance to work with, and just to learn from each other while we were working on these, how to mimic someone's style and to make the piece look cohesive. And so, we were there from 11:30 in the morning till 5:30 at night, working all day. We were covered in chalk and loved it. So, that's our other design of Mother Earth. And that's just, you know, a bigger view of what the festival looked like. There wasn't much room, and there were a lot of visitors just coming to look at the artwork.
That's impressive.
Covered in chalk. Proof of how...
That's a great picture.
...all covered in chalk we were.
That's a yearbook picture. Oh, look at that.
Yeah. And it took us all day, too. We were working on them all day.
How long did they keep them there?
They, in the...
Don't tell me it rained the next day.
They hosed them down. That's what I was told, that they hosed them down the next day. I know.
What?
Yep. When I had done this 10 years ago, we had done them in the streets of Providence, and they would keep them up until, you know, they eventually worn away, and cars would drive over them. But because of the location now, I guess they just...
Guess the value is in the day.
Yes. And there's so many people that come out and check out the artwork, and it's...
So, I'm wondering if we could hear from each of the students, like, what was your favorite part of doing this? Or talk about, this is a club, this is an after-school co-curricular club. So, either talk about what that experience means to you, having that opportunity, or what was special about this event? Because it's definitely unique.
Could you please tell us your name and your year when you speak?
You wanna start?
Okay. I'm Mike Relva, sophomore, I'm Breton. And I really enjoyed the fact that I got to go with a group of people, just paint and draw and do what I really like to do. It was fun.
Anna Noriega, I'm a freshman. And just like the whole experience of going into Providence, like driving in, like with a group of people that I somewhat know, like present alike, and like in front of people that I don't know, it's just like a great start of the year, just like brings out like of the many different opportunities you can do, more than...
The middle school, like, did for its after-school activities, and interacting with people, it just brought out, it just brought the whole, like, high school experience into phase. And yeah, it was lots of fun.
Hi, I'm Danielle DeVellis, and I'm a senior. And I liked working with all the younger kids that I normally wouldn't have a chance to work alongside. And then I was also excited that our old art teacher, Ms. Cahann, came in, showed her support. She surprised us.
Yes.
We're proud of you.
I'm Amber Daphne. I'm a junior this year at Foxborough High. And this year, I've learned a lot of new stuff, being in the Arts and Culture Club. It's kind of like a new adventure. You get to expand your friend, you get to look and see what other people can do, and it makes you wanna do even better than you already know how. And then going to the street art competition was awesome, because we were compared to a bunch of other artists, too. And it just, it made me wanna push myself even more, and I'm sure it did for everybody else as well.
Hi, I'm Carolyn Dorr, I'm a junior. And I've been involved in the art program since I came here, and I absolutely love it. It's whenever I have art class, it always puts me in a good mood. And being with everyone else that is also so passionate about art is a really rewarding experience. And going to Providence, what I thought most interesting, was most interesting is seeing everyone's different take. Everyone was given the same size square and the same chalk, but everyone had such a different design. There's everything from Breaking Bad to Pirates of Mermaid and Octopus, to fish swimming out of a city. And it was just, it was interesting to see everyone's different take on the same concept.
I love the enthusiasm from everyone, and I love the image, the mermaid, it's beautiful, the colors. And I love the photos that you took that showed the process of how you got to the completion of this. So, I wanna open it up to the rest of the committee.
I think it's excellent that the atmosphere, and thanks to the advisor, too, we have somebody from each grade on this scene.
Yeah, we do.
That's wonderful.
Yeah, we're a good group.
The cross-pollination.
Did you have to do a test drawing to sort of rehearse for the final product, or... That's quite a piece of work, and did it come out to your expectations? It's really beautiful.
It exceeded my expectations.
Yeah, mine as well.
Just the way that they applied the color, it's just so vibrant, and it was beautifully done. But we did not practice.
Really?
No, we had our two sketches, we, you know, we looked to those as guidance, and we just...
Which we hadn't even seen before we got there.
Yeah.
Danny, did it come out to your expectations as one of the lead drawers?
Well, my mermaid drawing, that was pretty much what it looked like, but I didn't have color on my original drawing. And then seeing it eight feet tall, it was pretty...
What'd you think?
It was more than I expected.
Pretty cool.
Absolutely beautiful.
Yes. Well, I can't think of a better way for a co-curricular club to bond so early in the year, since it's such a unique experience like that. So, I can only imagine what ideas you're gonna think up for the rest of the year.
I know, I guess that's my question, is what are they gonna do next?
We'll see.
I do love the clubs, though, and we've talked about this before, but they just extend opportunities for the kids, and I think that's terrific.
They do.
So, I guess we should also thank Sherri as a result for her time and participation.
Well, thanks for having us.
Thank you for coming in all so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, we're gonna move into the interview finalists for the position of Director of Special Education.
Yes. I would like to invite Dr. Sandra Einsel up to the guest table, as we call it. As you know, from my memo, Dr. Einsel is the finalist recommended to you for the Director of Special Education in the Foxborough Public Schools. She is a most qualified candidate for your consideration. This is the public interview by the committee. I've attached her resume, so that you had a chance to look at that before tonight. And as you can see, I know that she'll learn a lot more about the position from her time with you tonight, but I really wanna first publicly thank the initial interview and screening committee who reviewed the resumes with Dr. Burdos and conducted the initial interviews for the applicants. I think they did a really wonderful job. So, let me just say their names before I forget at the end. Teacher and staff representatives, Pam Anderson, Sue Forrest, Kim McDowell, Allison Mello, Janet Passiti, and Patty Young. Our parent representatives, Kathy Hickey and Linda Leary. Our school committee representatives, Tina Bellinger, Steve Buden. And our administrators, Sue Abrams, Amy, and Principal Mike Stanton. So, I just wanna thank the people that did all that work, and I'm very pleased to introduce you to Dr. Einsel tonight.
Nice to see you again.
Good evening.
Good evening, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Some of these questions that the school committee members have tonight, you may have heard before, I don't know, was it Tina and Steve, you can chime in as well. You know, the first thing that I always think about is what brings someone to Foxborough? What is it about Foxborough that, you know, attracts a particular candidate for a position? So, we'd love to hear from you about that.
Sure. I think one of the things that I had stated in my letter of introduction to superintendent is, even though that this was a kind of in-the-middle-of-the-year kind of position, I didn't feel like I could really pass it up. Your leadership team is really well-known in this area, and it's an extraordinary team. And I would like to be a part of that team. I come from a good, if not a great, team, but, you know, when you have an opportunity to be a part of this kind of leadership team, I wanted to take that opportunity.
That's wonderful. Good for you, Layden. Quite a compliment. Thank you.
I think the rest of them are sitting in the audience, so that's just a symbol, I think, to be here. So, thank you.
I have a related follow-on question, if I can, that dovetails with that, I think. Hi, I'm Bruce Gardner. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you for putting your name in. One of the things that I've observed in my time on the committee is that the Director of Special Education can act somewhat autonomously from the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. And I think that's based on perhaps the nature of the work, or the, I don't know if it's the funding, or the reporting structures or hierarchies with the State Department of Education and the procedures. Could you just comment on your view of how that position will and should work with the rest of the leadership team?
If you take a look at my resume and some of the letters of recommendation, you can see that I'm very much a team player. I think that in terms of special education, it was always meant to be a part of regular education. And over the years, as it first started out in the 70s and 80s, it became really a sub-separate culture. And really, we're really trying, during my career, I really tried to really focus on bringing those two cultures back together. And again, that's because you have to work closely with regular education. If your regular education is really strong, your special education's gonna be as strong as well. So, it's a team approach.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, absolutely.
Once you started down the path of challenging yourself and reaching goals, you kept on going.
Yes.
And I want to know, is there some student along the way that made you want to definitely continue this path? Is there a student that you worked with?
I think there are kind of multiple students. When I first started my career, I was working with the deaf, and a lot of my students that were deaf were multi-handicapped, which led me to come up to the B.C. program for Deaf Online Multi-Handicap. And while I was there, some of the students that I worked at the Boston College Campus School had social-emotional issues. So, that kind of led me into the social-emotional realm of the counseling and school psychology. That kind of made me wanna work with like alternative high school students. So, it's really kind of just where I was at that point in time in my life. And really, the students really are the reason that I continue to do it. I really enjoy my work.
Thank you.
I do have another question. I'm sure you've, you know, you've spent time in the district. I'm sure you've obviously done your homework about Foxborough, obviously you have about the leadership team. I'm curious as to what you see as our challenges here in this district, or opportunities for growth within the special education program.
Well, I actually took notes from, I met with each of the, each time I sat and talked with them, with people. I think that one of the things, I don't come in with an agenda. I think that certainly I would be working with the leadership team, and as well as the PAC, the Special Education PAC, about what they think their challenges are. And then really going from there, because I understand from my research, that the system is in very good shape. And so, I would really have to defer to kind of what people are thinking of, they think are challenges. I think that, I think I'll just leave it at that.
Okay. Does the rest of the committee have other questions?
I know we're hogging the agenda over here, but I think that's because the two of you had an opportunity.
We had a great opportunity to learn an awful lot about Dr. Einsel during our first initial interview. So, I defer, you go ahead and ask your question.
I just have one more, Dr. Einsel. You, for the people at home and who don't have your background, and we'll get it out to them, but you have a very proud and distinguished, I think, history, and I commend you for all your experience.
Thank you.
And we're fortunate to have you come to Foxborough. But most recently, you had some similar positions. And as I read through your resume, you were the Director of Pupil Services in Walpole, and then I think you had, it looks like a very similar position in Holliston.
Correct.
I was just curious what, you know, why you made the change, and why the change now to this.
Well, I think that the position over in Walpole, it's a fairly large district, and we were, we had done extraordinary things in terms of working with, bringing students back from out of district, developing programs. And then I think we went through some pretty difficult economic hardships, and I think that that became a little stressful. So, I went to a smaller system with a little less of those kind of hardships, doing similar things in terms of building the programs, really making sure the continuum of services from pre-K all the way through age 22, in the variety of programs that existed there, and went through the CPR and the mid-cycle. So, if this all works out, I'll be leaving them in very good shape.
So, it was a change in Walpole and an opportunity to go do something similar in Holliston?
A smaller district, about 1,000 students smaller, yes.
And then the transition here would be, how would you compare that in those same...
It's really the leadership team, like I was saying.
Yeah. Similar, are you, what are you looking for? Are you looking for a similar role? Are you looking for...
Similar role, and also trying to find what kind of different, what things that the, not only the leadership team would like to see different, but also the parents in terms of what are the strengths, what do they see, areas of challenges for them, and then work together to kind of tweak existing things, or really make major changes if that's what needs to happen.
Thank you.
See, Tina, I'd love to hear some feedback from either of you, because you were part of the process. Maybe you could just walk us through a little bit of that.
If Tina has anything first, please.
Okay, sure. Well, I know we discussed at length issues of social-emotional challenges that our regular classroom teachers are facing, and also the role of the paraprofessional in the special education department. And I wonder if you could address those two issues for the committee a little bit.
Sure. While I was in both Walpole and in Holliston, we were starting to see really a lot of social-emotional issues that started at a very young age. So, we, I developed, and again, I say "we" because I just don't do it by myself, I really work with a team of principals, teachers, and really trying to meet the needs of students, both regular ed and special ed. So, while in Walpole, we did a response to intervention, so we would work with both special ed and regular ed students. And we started with the Reading Street, because we saw a lot of the increase in special education, and some of these social-emotional issues were coming from the fact that students really were having difficulty learning to read. So, we started that response intervention, which really works with students that are at high risk or they may be in special education. And we were able to really address those students' needs at the elementary level. And we were really proud of the fact that we were able to bring our special ed population from 22% down to 15% in almost three years, because we were really looking at the data. There were more curriculum casualties rather than special ed students. So we really were able to address those, the reading needs and also the social-emotional needs, because if you can't read, the school's pretty difficult. So we also, at that point in time, started to look at our social-emotional concerns. And we worked with Walker School, and I understand that Foxborough also consults, they consult with Foxborough. And we developed a continuum of programs for students with social-emotional needs from, from elementary all the way through the high school setting. And again, we were able, at that point in time, we were, many of our students were leaving the high school, I mean, in, you know, maybe four or five a year, which can be pretty expensive, and there wasn't really a need for that. We could really meet the needs of students in the high school, or we had a program next to the high school, without them having to leave the community. And many of the schools, although they're very good, these private schools, really the rigorous education is in their community schools, such as Walpole High School and Holliston High School and Foxborough. So then I went on, as still in Walpole, we looked at our professional development. And we really understood that in order, you had to build capacity within. So it can't be just the special ed teachers, it can't be just the principals. It has to be regular education teachers, paraprofessionals, really understanding what the needs are. So we did a variety of professional development opportunities, not only in Reading Street and, but understanding behavior management, understanding how to bring a student down who might be really starting to have a unfortunate situation and be sent to the principal's office, how a teacher or regular or special ed or paraprofessional can really reduce those kinds of incidents and keep a student in the classroom. We also trained regular ed teachers about how to also de-escalate situations within, within the regular ed classroom, as well as the special educators were also attending to that. So I kind of took that on the road, went to Holliston and have kind of continued that professional development with the paraprofessionals, regular ed and special ed, also developing programs for students with social-emotional issues and really streamlining the programs preschool to, through high schools that they're, so as they move from building to building, the transition isn't so difficult, because many times students with special needs do have difficulties with transitions. So.
I don't have really any questions. I want to congratulate the doctor for making it through what the people at home might not know is, for education professionals, quite an interview process. Our administration here sits through interviews of 15 to sometimes more people. It's pretty intense. The questions come from all over the place, but we're consistent in the questions that we've asked as a group. I can't speak for the whole group, but I'm 100% confident that we've picked the right candidate. And just wanted you to, if you will, sing that song I love again about, you were talking about, you know, how you have grant experience and your family and parental availability. I think that's important for people at home to have. And I wonder if you could just sort of tell us your philosophy of how you deal with the parents and families as well.
Well, I'm a very much a people person. This goes for both families and for getting into the schools. Principals would see me very often, as well as classroom teachers and special ed teachers and special ed students and regular ed students I got to know. But I really think that it's very important, I think that a lot of times when there are difficulties with families or with families and schools, it is about communication. So if the first time, the communication isn't clear or there's a conflict, I always tend to go back to the table and sit down and say, are we understanding each other? Or do we just have to agree to disagree? Or is there a situation where we really are just not understanding each other? And I think that most times it is a situation where people aren't communicating and are not understanding each other. And it's always been very, it's paid off for me as a professional to really be able to sit down and talk to families and understand what their concerns are and do our best to resolve it within the system.
Thank you very much.
You had her nervous when you wanted her to sing.
I did too.
That was the hardest question she got.
These folks know me, and I wasn't going to go and ask you to really sing, but it was, I was very impressed. I was very impressed during the interview process with your answers to that. And I hope other people find it the same way, I'm sure they will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Well, definitely, I feel that way. I think that's really important, because, you know, we talk about students, but, you know, their families are, you know, an integral part, obviously, of what we do in the classroom. So making sure that they are heard, they feel heard, that communicate, that they're being, that there's a communication between the school and the family and the student. I think that's critical. And I know from my own experience, hearing from family members, that's often a concern of theirs. So I'm delighted to hear that. And we, as a committee, have been talking for a long time about social-emotional issues and the impact that that has on any student in the classroom. And so I'm very delighted to hear your viewpoint on that as well, because that affects learning. And if we don't address those issues, we're not doing what we're supposed to be doing. So I think that we, as a committee, have a lot of emphasis on that. So I don't know if anybody else has any other comments or questions?
There was one other area that was of, well, all of the areas were important that we discussed during the interview process. But one other area was the transition from high school, post-high school for our special ed students. And I wonder if you could give us your thoughts on that as well?
Sure. I think that transition is very large, not only in this state, but nationally. And I think, again, we, as a community, would have to sit down and talk about what that looks like and what it means for the community, for individual families. And then we would have to take a look at making sure that our students, our staff first, are, understand what is expected to, by the regulations, what is, what is kind of the current practice? And what is, how does that fit into Foxborough Public Schools? And then work closely with families in developing what a transition process would be. So.
Thank you.
This is why we have representation on the search committee, because it's important for the school committee to have a voice and then for us to have feedback from the process. So thank you both for that. Appreciate it. That's definitely helpful for me as we're sitting here about ready to take a vote.
Yeah. Administratively, I'd like to thank Amy for a lot of the help she did keeping a large group together focused on point to help us find ultimately what I think is an excellent candidate. It's a lot of work and it's very important. So thank you for your help with that and your oversight with a lot of what we, what we did.
Again, Carla, Steve.
Definitely talking about team. It's a team and we have a great team. So when you talk about coming to a good team, you won't be disappointed. We really do have a great team. And I know that I'm very fortunate to be a part of it myself.
Thank you.
It's so hard to sit here, because it's not my interview. And I'm like, wow, I have to remind myself, don't say anything. But I really would like to pick up on Bruce's question, because you really hit on something that I would say I would put on my top few reasons for thinking that Dr. Einzel is exactly the perfect match at the right time, which is, she has such a vast experience and depth of experience in every aspect of education, specifically special education, but education in general. And having served as, in a broader role as Director of Student Services, she really does bring more than we've ever had in terms of someone who is going to connect with regular ed and, and has lots of ideas how to do so that we talked about in her interview with me and Bill Yugna, who was the second, we were the second round of interviews after you guys sent us finalists, so semifinalists or candidates. So we would really like to tap into that and that broader definition of what it means to be in special education, but broader, how does it connect with regular ed? And maybe, we've talked about some concrete ways that she could bring to the table to connect that. So I'd put that on my top couple of reasons why. So I think that was a great question, because it really spoke to something that I saw in her that I thought could really bring us to a little bit of a different place.
Do you have any questions for us?
No, I think I asked you quite a few and as well as.
You had good questions. Katie, do you need a motion?
I do.
Okay. Well, I will make the motion that we appoint Dr. Einzel our next Director of Special Education.
Can I second that?
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Five-zero. Welcome aboard. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well, I don't even have to get up to escort you all, because you can see representation of the team. We have a bunch of our principals here, Mrs. Abrams, Mr. Stanton, we have Mr. Regan, Michelle McCarthy, we have our special ed department head, Patty Young, we have another department head, Karen Frazier, we have Alison Mello, our director, and Sue Kyle's here for her report. But we have lots of people here to greet you, so I'm sure they can do a wonderful escort out if they're not the next person on the agenda. So we'll be talking in the next day or two.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Good night. May I ask, when will we see the doctor? Do we know when we'll see the doctor onboard?
Yes.
Are there steps or?
Yes. So the next steps, I had a very brief conversation with her current employer on Friday, because this is the final step, which has to be, you know, passed. So I will be speaking to him again in the next couple of days to work out a transition plan. As you know, this type of position does require a fairly lengthy transition, so we want to be cognizant of that on the part of the district she's currently in now. As you know, we have an interim special ed director in place who arrived this morning, and she's also very experienced. So she's going to hold down the fort for another couple of months until we can work out a transition date. So that will be occurring. And then your vote tonight actually gives me permission to enter into contract negotiations with Dr. Einzel. So we'll be doing that in the next few days and working out the terms of her contract. So that usually takes, you know, a week or so.
Thank you.
We will know the date, so thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to 2012, 2013 Math Curriculum Review Final Report. Dr. Bertos.
Allison Mello and Sue Carl are going to join us up at the guest table there, as they were the two that co-chaired the K-12 Math Curriculum Review Team that took place last year. We had a presentation, a full presentation, on one of our biggest recommendations that came out of that review back in June. And so this is a follow-up to give more of a summary of the different things that came out as far as areas of strength, areas of need, our priorities and recommendations for professional development, curriculum instruction and assessment. So in June, we came with our biggest priority, which was with the alignment of the new Massachusetts curriculum frameworks, which incorporates the Common Core state standards. A new textbook was warranted for middle school and high school. But this evening, we wanted to talk a little bit more, there was 18 people that were on that committee that worked all year long last year, collecting both qualitative and quantitative data, from teacher surveys to taking every single standard and teasing it out to look next to where we currently are with our own curriculum documents, our pacing, our assessments and how it would align. So there was a lot of work that went into it. So the couple of pages that you have within your PAC, it really are just that summary. And it goes through what were our positive findings, what are our current needs that we've already started to address at the end of last school year over the summer and in full force this year? And then also, what are our recommendations and the direction that we're heading as a result of that extensive curriculum review? So I'm going to turn it over to Sue and Alison to kind of, they'll go back and forth, talking about the K to eight and the high school, and discuss some of those positive findings and our needs and how they connect to curriculum instruction, assessment and professional development.
Great. All right.
Well, thanks for having us here. As Amy said, we did an extensive, comprehensive process of data analysis, looking at both qualitative and quantitative data. We surveyed our teachers, we looked at our test scores, we looked at our alignment to standards. And we found that there's a lot going on that's very positive and that we were doing, yeah, we were doing very well. The biggest catalyst for change was really the implementation of the new Massachusetts frameworks that incorporate the Common Core standards. So we're just going to go through this chart and sort of, we're going to talk about our positive findings, our needs, our recommendations, and then what we are doing and where we are on our timeline for the things that we're doing. So in terms of curriculum, one of the positive findings was that we have very detailed curriculum documents in place for grades K through eight. And those were a goal of ours for the last couple of years in order to create consistency across the elementary schools and the middle school. It's really important for us to get a consistent student coming out of three different elementary schools. In addition to that, we had implemented pacing guides that are only guides, but they really serve as a model to help teachers be really close to each other in terms of pace of instruction. If one student was to move from one teacher to another teacher, for example, there wouldn't be giant gaps. And that ties into our common assessments, so that we're giving the common assessments around the same time, so that everybody is sort of on par with each other.
We're a little bit behind, but still on track with all of that. When NIAS came through, we had already started looking at our curriculum guides and our pacing guides and trying to get them up to date. We've actually spent the past couple of summers now trying to get them aligned with the new set of frameworks. And along with that, we've also been working towards, I'm kind of jumping ahead a little bit, but the common assessments. And what does that look like in the high school? What does that look like across an honors level and a CP level? Is it the exact same question for both of them? So we've had some very spirited discussions over the past couple of years. And we feel that we're really ready to make some final decisions on that and move forward and broaden some of these common assessments and instructional practices as well. I'll go back to the, to the instruction, as I'm tying all three. The big three always go together.
We're not going to give this too verbatim, we're just going to summarize it. The needs, when we were looking at our curriculum documents, we've been talking to you a lot about the 21st century skills. And that's something that we would like to really explicitly outline within our curriculum documents, so that teachers can be more cognizant of when they're hitting those 21st century skills within their instruction. We believe that's happening already. But we'd like to document it so that we can say we are accountable for that in our curriculum document.
In some cases, it's just putting the name on something that we've already been doing. And again, like Alison was talking, we want to make sure that that's occurring across all of the teachers. Now I'm speaking for just the high school, but same. No, no. Same K to 12. You know, you want to make sure that in all the different classrooms that are teaching the same thing, that the skills are all there, the same types of instruction is happening so that it is consistent from classroom to classroom.
Moving into instruction, there were a lot of survey questions about teachers and the support that they felt that they had. And some of our positive findings were that our middle school and elementary math specialists are very well-received and well-used, not just for the student groups, because they are heavily used with the students, but also as a resource for teachers for supporting their own math content, their pedagogy. And it's great that they have that go-to person who's close by, not always there, because we have two for three buildings, but who's close by. And then with Sue, having the department head.
Well, we are always going to each other. We're a pretty cohesive group and we don't have a math specialist, but within the department, you know, you've had some teachers that have been teaching the same courses for a couple of years, and then they have become the expert. And so that's where the communication goes and the collaboration really begins. So we find it very positive that people are comfortable to go to each other and have those conversations. In terms of the needs, we're looking for how can we maybe build in a more structured time for that to happen, so that we're not doing that at lunch before school, in the four minutes of passing time, that kind of a thing. That was one of the big things that came out of it.
Right. That was one of the recommendations. But one of the positive findings was that we do have our department head meetings, PLCs, and we have ongoing meetings at the middle school cycle meetings. So there are built-in times right now, they would like a little bit, the teachers would like a little bit more.
Right. The high school meets once a month, so that's, there are other things that get put on, you know, into that meeting and not just curriculum talk or instruction talk, that kind of a thing. So we're, we're trying to figure out how can we carve out some more time.
So in terms of the needs, one, to piggyback on that, one of the bullets says, expand opportunities for collaboration to enhance instructional practices, because now that we have our content set, now we have to start looking at how we deliver that content. And the PARK and the Common Core has different demands for rigor in the way that we're questioning students, in the way that we're delivering instruction more conceptually. So that's something that does require quite a bit of collaboration.
Well, and I can give an example from last year that came out of some SMART goals that some teachers had. They actually, and the administration was great to allow them some flexibility to actually go in and observe other teachers in the department. So even if we couldn't all get together at the same time, teachers were going out and going into another classroom, how was this lesson being presented? What kind of activity were you doing? How were you handling that material? So that was something that those that did it really enjoyed, and I think we're going to see some continuation of that.
Well, and I think it speaks to one of the most positive things that may not even be explicitly outlined here, is what we found is, we have a tremendous community of learners on our faculty. And it's really exciting. I can't tell you how many teachers have come to me and said, oh, are you going to teach a graduate course in math? That's not something you hear every day from every teacher. And I think it's really exciting that everybody wants to continue to push so that we can have the best possible curriculum, the best possible instruction for our students. And I applaud them for that.
Yeah, yeah. No, it's very exciting to hear the conversation as people are, you know, diving into this curriculum now and the new standards and, you know, as the conversations blossom about how are you teaching it and what is this about? And the excitement, the excitement that people come with based on what the kids are now doing and the conversations that the students are having in class and the questions and the higher-order thinking questions that are now popping up in classes, it's, there's just a lot of excitement going on right now.
For example, Sue emailed us down at the middle school to say how excited the high school staff was with the caliber of freshman student they had and the types of skills and conceptual understandings they were bringing. We were all very excited about that, because there's a lot of work that's gone into this and we're already starting to see the results.
And we're starting to see, right, the dividends.
Wow, that's nice.
Yeah. No, well, yay.
A. The communication. Just the communication is wonderful, but the fact that, the fact that you're, we're working hard in one direction, if you can see the results of that or other people can, it makes you want to work harder. You know, and keep going, so. And great for the kids. How confident they must feel. Moving into the area of assessment, assessment has been something we have been working intensely on at the elementary level, because there are just so many implications when you have three schools going on. And at the middle school level, they've really been leaders with the Galileo Standards-Based Assessment. So we, one of the positive findings we found was that we have our common assessments in line from K through eight. We spent the summer, and I'll talk a little bit more about that later, realigning them to the Common Core to make sure that everything, not only the content standards were represented, but the practice standards and how the kids are being questioned and answering questions. We also have a widespread use of diagnostic assessments across the district, with almost every teacher in the district being trained in the first steps in mathematics. And we have developed, if you have a student who's in grades K through four, you know a lot about our Fact Fluency Plan that we have in place, where we're testing kids four times a year and teaching them strategies for that. We also have our common mid-year and end-of-year benchmarks for K through eight.
So I was talking a little bit before about the fact that we're working hard to establish a set of core questions for mid-year and finals to be used, again, across the different levels of a course for college prep and honors. So if you take geometry, college prep, and honors on both your midterm and final, you would expect to see, you know, a set of questions that are the same for both groups, so that we can start to establish some norms there. The other thing that happens throughout the year that, again, we've been building on over the past couple of years, we've had some teachers take the John Collins Writing Class, and they've established, we call them FCEAs for that content assessment. And we've been bringing those writing problems into the classroom. And again, across an algebra class, there would be one that all of the algebra teachers would give and have the students write, explain something. It really is about the writing and the communication. And then as we have time, we try to sit down and, again, get a norm for how do we grade that and how do we give the points to that. So that's something also that we have been building on over the past couple of years as well. Yeah, it's the past two summers, we've had a group each time take the course, and it's been very good.
That's excellent. And that really plays into the standards for math practice.
Yes, it does.
Kids doing that.
Yes, it does.
And authentic literacy.
Yep.
It's like a talk show.
Don't give them any ideas.
I'm just kinda wondering if you wanna take a little break, like, what do the students think about writing in mathematics?
Yeah, what do you think?
What do you think?
Can you pass them a microphone?
Oh, yes, I stole your mic.
We can share.
Yeah, we can share.
For me, coming from, sorry, coming from another middle school and coming from another high school on top of that, for me, transitioning to here was very difficult, especially with the math, 'cause the math, you know, I thought, back in my old schools, I was really strong in math, but yet, when I came here, freshman year, and like, about a week or, about a week or two late, you know, going to, I was in honors math at my old school, coming to honors math here, having to leave that, go to CP and still struggling, I was wondering what you're doing for those students that are coming from another schooling system?
It is a good question. You know, I would hope that your teacher has sort of sat down to sort of investigate where the problems lie in terms of your transition. I know that my experience has been in the past that it's about that writing, it's about the fact that we're not just doing the skill and the drill, that we're really trying to get the understanding of the concepts and really getting you to talk about it. Would you say that that's what was some of the problems in terms of, like, your struggles in terms of being able to really explain, or do you remember?
For me, I would say most, most of my strengths were in algebra. So coming from, you know, starting geometry at my old school, I was in honors geometry, was doing fairly well, and then coming here, I just struggled a lot with it. And so it was just like, I don't know if it was the way maybe it was being, teachers were teaching it, or if it was just the way I was taught at my old high school compared to here.
There's probably a learning curve, but I think that what all teachers try to do when they see anybody that's struggling, is I really think that they try to get into, you know, some differentiated instruction in terms of some different activities or some different questions that they might ask you, to try to really pinpoint where are your struggles and then what can they do to help you with that? And with any luck, if you had some sort of a dialogue or you've maybe felt some of that over the course of the year, and your skills hopefully improved. But I think in general, we're really looking for the, for the teacher to work with the students and see what can be done there and try to pull you in. And I know we've had a lot of discussion in the department about also with peers and getting students to work together to do a lot of communication. It's a struggle, it's been a struggle over like the past year or so. Students ask a question and they want an immediate answer, and what they're finding in the classroom is that we're not giving an immediate answer. We're hoping that another student might be able to help you out or give you an explanation. And that takes a little bit of time to sort of, you know, change that mindset that the teacher's just gonna keep telling, telling, telling. So that's some of what we've seen, a shift as that has begun to happen, you know, all the way down, that the expectation is that the students will help each other, and we'll be able to do that explaining as well.
And I would say, the process is slightly different at the middle school. When we get a new student, we give them an assessment that's based on their previous grade level, and we really look to see where their strengths and weaknesses are, and we really try to place them in the course that will allow them to be most successful. So just because it said honors maybe on your previous transcript, if the evidence on the assessment is maybe that you wouldn't benefit from an honors course, that you maybe would be better in the regular level course, that's where we want to put you, so that you can be the most successful. So we're really cognizant of that, because it's, every school is different, and you're exposed to things in a different way, and even certain math programs teach things a certain way, and so we want to make sure that we can accommodate you, so that you don't lose your momentum and your confidence in math, because that's really important to us.
We have a lot of those conversations, perhaps later on, as you, you know, we see that that struggle is occurring, then the conversation begins also with the guidance counselor in terms of where were you, and, you know, again, hopefully the teacher was having a conversation with you as well, to try to figure out if that was a good place and what else you needed for some support.
I have a question. I'm a little curious. You said there are assessments used at the middle school, but not at the high school.
They're different. Well, they have courses at the high school, so it's sort of apples and oranges, it's a little bit different.
But is there a way to assess a student who's coming into a particular mathematics course?
We could, right. I'm hopeful that there'll be less of a need for that now that we're going to the Common Core, and so that an Algebra I class is the same Algebra I class everywhere? That's not always the case. So when a student comes in and comes through guidance, unfortunately, we can have a situation like this where it's, the process has started and he's in a class, and we realize that something's not quite right, and we're playing catch-up on that. So that would be a good point to try to investigate, is there something ahead of time that we could do to maybe see where, you know, where the strengths lie?
Moving on to professional development. I have to say, it was really exciting to sit here and listen to the interview that was going on, because a lot of our work has been trying to create opportunities for special education teachers and regular education teachers and paraprofessionals to really work together, especially in the realm of our professional development in math, because we realize that all of those stakeholders really need to be exposed to great content training and great pedagogy training, because they're all invested in the student success. So we were looking at some of our positive findings, and what we found were, over ninety percent of our regular and special education teachers from K through five are trained in the first step diagnostic assessment, and we've done a professional development for the educational assistance on the interventions, so that they can support on the intervention side. We've also offered from K to 12 multiple opportunities for onsite graduate courses, and I think part of our role is to communicate additional opportunities that go on outside of the district that people do take advantage of.
Right, well, and I was gonna add in that the special education teachers that teach in mathematics, they are available to come to our department meetings, and at the end of the week, they're gonna be in our professional development classes. I can't think of a better word for that right now.
Workshops.
Workshops, that's the word I'm looking for. They'll be in our workshops on Friday during the staff development day, and they participated in the workshops back at the very beginning of the school year before the students actually arrived. So we've been working really hard, and Patty's been great about that, to try to give them that opportunity to join us during those staff development days and workshop times, so that they are up to speed with what's going on within the department. Both of the teachers participated in the summer workshops, the summer working on the curriculum and being, you know, up to speed on what that curriculum looks like and how they might implement it in their classroom as well.
So some of the needs that we thought, or things that we could maybe do a little bit better, were embed more professional, math professional development opportunities during the day, either amongst colleagues with that collaboration time we talked about, leveraging the math specialists a little bit more in that domain, myself, Sue, as leadership people on the team, to support and embed that in our meetings and in our interactions with our teachers. If we move to the next, there we go. So this is just an overview, and we've spoken a lot about all of this already, so we're not gonna go through it in excruciating detail, but the recommendations of the committee are on the left side, and the right side sort of tells you what actions we've taken and what our timeline is. So just to go through it quickly, when we were here in June, we really focused on recommendation one, which was the implementation of the new Common Core-aligned textbooks and program materials. The textbooks were for six through eleven.
Through eleven.
Eleven, and then the supplemental materials were for K through five. So that was all done this summer and fully implemented this fall. There's ongoing training for those resources, some of that will be happening this Friday.
On Friday, yep.
So the second recommendation.
So in terms of the next recommendation, the revision to the curriculum for alignment to the CCSS, a lot of the content has moved around. It's not in the same courses that it used to be, it's not in the same grades, and as we, as we make these adjustments, it also might adjust the pacing, because of the depth of what we're covering. So this past summer, I think it looks like across the board, we were all involved in curriculum writing, trying to realign those. I know we are not completely done, but we're really, really close to done here at the high school, because we're waiting until everything sort of rolls through. So this year, ninth graders, all the ninth graders are in the Algebra I, and everything is aligned to those new standards, and then as they move forward, we will continue to tighten up the curriculums and the pacing guides that exist there.
Can I interrupt you guys just for a second? Just for a question on that? So I was gonna ask, have we cut over fully to these new texts and these new standards, or is it a process?
Well, it's a process. The ninth graders here are fully, fully invested in the new standards at this point. The sophomores, there's one group of sophomores that are, they are the ones who are currently taking geometry, they took Algebra I last year. The other group of sophomores is taking Algebra II, and to the best of our ability, we are trying to be as true as we can to the standards. However, because they did not go through previous courses that were all, you know, aligned with the standards, there are things that we have to make sure we include, so that they don't have gaps someplace else. So it's really a hybrid. And then the same thing is happening with the juniors that are taking Algebra II, they're in a hybrid as well.
Not that they weren't aligned, they were aligned with the old standards.
Correct, right, it's not right, it's not, I'm sorry, right.
We were aligned to the most current, at the time, and now it's been kind of a big shift, especially in the eight to eleven.
Right. So we have some hybrid courses running as that last group goes through and finishes up based on the old standards. And then, like I said, starting this freshman class, they are all in new standards courses, and as they move forward, it will again be, everything will be aligned to the current standards.
I don't wanna speak to high school, but isn't one of the biggest reasons because the new Algebra I course really has a lot of Algebra II?
It's a lot of Algebra II in it, right, right. It's very interesting right now. It's very, very interesting right now, as you walk around and you hear the conversations, because the Algebra I and the Algebra II teachers are all talking about the same, they're all talking about quadratics, and everybody's about to be on that topic, some have started it already, and that's due to the shift in the new standards. So, yes, thank you. So we had that conversation a while ago about that. Algebra I is not what we all took for Algebra I.
I know what my son's doing in eighth grade, and it seems like that's Algebra I.
It is, actually. Those standards shifted down to Algebra, to the eighth grade, which is why we can no longer skip over eighth grade and offer that Algebra there.
Yeah, right.
But I really wish they changed the names, because it is very confusing.
It is confusing. It'll, in a couple more years, it'll be a little bit easier, because we won't have these hybrid groups anymore, and everybody will sort of then in that, the flow that's been set up by the new standards. But we're really still in a little bit of a transition time in the upper grades.
And in the lower grades, when we did our alignment, we did not, there was no justification for abandoning Think Math, which we talked about in June, but we did incorporate a new resource called Hands-on Standards, that meets all the standards that we weren't meeting in Think Math, and it has been really embraced by the teachers, the students are loving it, it's just as it implies, it's very hands-on, the kids are conceptualizing, and they're really learning the material. So I've gotten several emails from teachers saying, this is really great, it's meeting these standards, and the kids are enjoying the learning, so happy to hear that. And that really affected our pacing and our rewriting of our curriculum documents, because to their credit, the teachers are toggling between Think Math and then adding in this lesson where they need to, and making it all seamless, so that the kids have no idea that there's anything different. It's all nice continuity.
Moving down to number three.
Sure.
Okay, so I've already talked a little bit about here at the high school in terms of what we're trying to do to make sure that the special education teachers are included. They're included on regular departmental emails, there are course leaders for each of the courses here at the high school, and as they send out an email to the other teachers, they're making sure that they also include the special education teachers. I mentioned earlier about their availability, now come to the department meetings and be in the conversation at the department meetings and the professional development training as well. So we're trying to make sure that that communication is open and remains open, and they're also part of the dialogue.
Sue, can I just, as you, that wasn't being done before?
Some of it was, we're trying to strengthen it a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So it's not that it's all brand-new, but we're really trying to strengthen and really make it a little bit more inclusive. I wanna say that in terms of the course leader and sometimes the course emails, that wasn't always as great as it should have been, but with PARC coming down the pike for the assessment, and, you know, it doesn't really matter which version of Algebra I you're gonna take, you're gonna take that PARC exam, we really feel that it's important to make sure that the instructional practices are very similar, no matter which level of the Algebra I you are in.
Sounds like the new special education director shares your viewpoint, so I would assume that this would be strengthened even more.
So when I had, when I had asked for some summertime to have, like, all the Algebra I teachers sit down and talk about the curriculum and what was new and what needed to change, I made sure to include Scott Morrison, Betsy Dendonum, to make sure that they were part of those conversations, so that they too understood for sure what the shifts were and knew what the expectations were gonna be in the classroom, so that they would be able to support the students.
Thank you.
It's really about strengthening that dialogue.
And I would say that's the same down from K through eight, where we include the special education teachers in our grade level meetings and in our professional development, as we mentioned. And in our summer curriculum work, we've had the special education teacher working alongside the regular education teacher on things like modified assessments and revisions to curriculum documents, so that they really learn the curriculum from inside out. And this summer in particular, there was one project proposed by a special education teacher to work in collaboration with the elementary math specialist, to create a menu of goals that will really help special education teachers as they're writing their IEPs and thinking about goals for math, so that it has the math perspective as well as the special education perspective. And we were really excited about that, because again, creates a lot of consistency for everybody.
Are we at the last one, the review schedules?
I think we are.
Reviewing schedules.
The biggest thing at high school was the collaboration time. So again, you know, we're doing what we can to try to find some of that time in a department meeting. I've started sending out emails with just some of the factual information, so that we can free up some of that time to, you know, look at student work or, you know, look at some pedagogy around instructional practice, that kind of a thing. That's where we are right now in terms of trying to find some time, along with professional development days, and what do we need for a workshop on that particular day.
And in terms of more time on math, which was also part of that review, at the middle school, Principal Abrams has been great about working collaboratively to carve out some additional times for math. There are some specific times at each grade level, using the flex time or the B Core block, to expand those, so that making sure in the twenty minutes, for example, that that's really being used to target math. And down at the elementary, the principals there have instituted one additional grade level meeting per month, which gives teachers that extra opportunity.
So the middle school, just, I wanna make sure we're all clear, and I'm still clear on, the middle school wasn't about the collaboration time so much, it was about student time on math.
Correct.
Okay, great, very comprehensive. A lot of work. You know, I just want, Joe had a, raised his hand, he had a question. Do you wanna just come up to the microphone, Joe?
Would that include Mrs. Vlonty too?
Would what?
With math like Mrs. Demorex and Mrs. Dendonum?
That's a good question.
That would be a really good question. So the answer to that is not currently, it has not, but that would be a good place to proceed.
I know Mr. Griffin wanted, because that's post-secondary, secondary, like, after, when you're eighteen, you're staying till you're twenty-two. Like after, when you're 18, you're staying till you're 22.
Right.
That's a good idea. Mrs. Cow will check on that.
Yeah, I will check on that.
I don't have it for me, I find Mr. Morris.
I know you do.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
You're doing pretty well in it too, but I know he doesn't want me to say that publicly.
Yes, can you come up and state your name and say the, yes, please?
We'll part the sea.
Hi, I just had a quick question. As far as budgeting?
Can you state your name just for the record?
It's Nancy Morrison.
Thank you.
As far as budgeting, I know you have to keep up with math and the current math and all that, but is there any thought to, like, who makes the decisions as far as materials? Between last year and this year, there were two different calculators that were needed. And they get, they're very.
Between which grades?
Yeah, between like seventh, eighth and ninth grade. There's different calculators that are needed. And I just was wondering.
I know, I'm like, I'm not sure about that.
We provide the calculators at the middle school. I know that most high school students do purchase a calculator.
And we request, and we've been requesting the same calculator for many, many years now.
Right. And I understand you have to keep up with the curriculum and everything, but as far as, I'm just thinking of, you know, parents, single parents, parents that maybe are a little strapped.
Right.
Is there a way that the committee or someone can maybe reach out to a company and buy them in bulk and maybe help people a little bit?
If a student approaches a teacher and talks about a need and, or whatever, we've always been able to provide one for the student.
I've heard from a lot of people that sometimes people are strapped with these, with the calculator. Because the one this year was $120. And if you have more than one child, it could get a little.
It does.
So I'm wondering if maybe you could buy them in bulk and maybe help families that way?
It's, yes. We have some that are available when students come forward to us and, or parents come forward. I actually sent an email, or not an email, I'm sorry, but in the Foxworthy at the high school, I had sent a letter out saying that if you had any questions or anything like, or concerns, it was included in the Foxworthy that came home at the very end of August. There, my email was on there and you could have, that would have been a perfect time for you to, you know, have responded and we would have been able to address that and have helped you out.
Right, well, we didn't know at the time that, I mean, we're new to the high school. So we didn't know at the time that it was going to, we were going to have this recalculated and required.
Yeah, right.
So, I mean.
That's a really, that's a good question though. And we do have some of the school alums that we would lend to a family who really needed it. And there's two schools of thought. It is a really expensive item. I totally get it, having done it twice many years ago when it was, I think, even 100 back in the day.
Right.
But, you know, there's two schools of thought. One is that if you buy it now, they're going to take it to college. But there were a lot of kids that aren't going to, you know, or are going to major in something else that wouldn't require that level of math in college. So I think it's probably a good idea to look into because we've been doing that business, certainly, my kids are older, but we've been doing it that way for a long time and maybe it's a good time to take a separate look at that.
I mean, even as far as supplies, I mean, the supplies from year to year is just getting, it's just getting.
And I can only speak for elementary and middle, but as part of our materials adoption, we did purchase just basic calculators, not the graphic calculators that required at the high school, but so that the classroom teachers are provisioned with calculators at the middle school.
Right. And we have some that are for use in the classroom. And like I said, we have some that do get signed out like a book, like a textbook, to students that have need.
Oh, okay. Didn't know about that either. Okay, all right.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thanks for asking.
I just wanted to add that Nancy's point really is a good one. And I heard from a lot of parents at the start of the school year. I'm sure Bruce and Steve, Debbie, you've all heard the same thing. But I've heard many people say exactly what Nancy just said about the calculator specifically, but in general about the school supplies. So maybe we need to take a look at what the lists are and what we're asking of people and what we can do.
I'm wondering if that's something maybe Bill can look into, you know, just in terms of buying in bulk? Because, you know, even at a reduced cost, possibly.
The only problem with state law is we aren't actually able to buy. We could basically set up a purchasing agreement, but we can't buy itself because we're tax exempt and we can't pass that on, you know, directly to individuals, unfortunately. So, but there is a possibility that we could contract and say that we're going to, you know, through the group, they're going to buy XMO and maybe get a better price that way, so.
It's definitely something we should look into though.
Yeah, okay. Bill, maybe you can go back to us at another school committee meeting. Appreciate that.
That is a big ticket item.
It is, and especially if you have more than one child.
Yes. Agreed.
You can't share a calculator.
No.
You know, so it's.
I agree.
You shouldn't be. You shouldn't be sharing a calculator. But they are really important because they are something that is used on MCAS right now and your SATs. So it's really important that the students have them and become proficient with them. So when they are taking these high stakes exams, that they're familiar with them and know how to use them. So it definitely is an investment. It is something, even if you don't use them outside of college, you will use them for all four years here.
So as it is now, obviously, we're going to look into it, but as it is now, there, if any parent who might be watching sends an email to a teacher or to you saying this is a hardship, we have them available that we lend for their, for the course of the year.
We do.
Important to know. And people should not hesitate to do that.
Could that be something we throw in a newsletter or something like that?
Well, I think it's just the way, you know, I think, I think we just leave it at that. I think that's.
There have been several that have already been loaned out this year.
All right, thank you. Any, any other comments? Thank you, this great presentation and a lot of information.
One more thing I'd like to add, if that's okay. As far as the recommendations and the outcomes, we, on our professional development day this Friday, for the middle school and the high school, will be having the support of the publisher to come and work on the multitude of technology resources that come with our new programs.
Correct.
It has transformed the way the instruction is happening in the classroom and really allowed people to leverage their interactive whiteboards. And there is a parent component to that. So I know at, the eighth grade are going to be the first penguins, the eighth grade teachers, and they're going to bring the parents in to try to show them how everything works. And we'll see how that goes and we'll let you know and we'll look at our sixth and seventh after that. But that's coming up, I think, the first week of November so that there will be a forum for parents to come and learn. There are things like a tutor, an electronic tutor in there. That might not only help the students, but will help the parents.
That would be fabulous because I'm glad I don't have school age children now. But if you put like math and technology, it would be, those are too great. If they're going to combine, double the reason why we could do more parent information and help sessions. I'm just saying.
Yeah, no, I think it will be great. So I really hope that parents will come. We will talk it up, Allison.
Yes, please do.
Thank you.
Katie. Allison, remind me, who's the publisher that we use?
It's Glencoe slash McGraw-Hill.
Yes, they keep changing their name, but yeah, they keep buying Glencoe.
Buying each other off, yes.
And STEM is such an important topic right now. Do you guys feel comfortable that with these changes, we're keeping pace and doing all we need to do? Or do you need more support? Besides time, we always hear time. And we work on that, but.
Oh, no, we know that, we know that. I feel we've had a lot of conversations around it. So I think that we're definitely moving towards that, in that direction. Certainly, we have the math curriculum, that component. We've had some discussions about engineering pieces and what we might be able to bring in into that. We have an engineering club that has just started that was brought about by some students that had a need. So as the needs arise, we're really trying to fill that, fill those gaps and make sure, you know, that we're meeting those needs.
We actually met last week, I met with Mrs. Mize Pakula and several of the department heads to further, put further detail in our outline plans to expand STEM and Business and Tech Ed. So we need that for a meeting that Allison and I have Thursday of this week. But I'll, after that, I will be bringing that to the committees for an update as to what we're doing. So that's coming within the next month or so.
And in addition to that, I'm, I'm part of the tri-town STEM initiative and we are planning a tri-town STEM expo for June 5th. It will be held at Wheaton College and it will be Mansfield, Foxborough and Norton. And I will be taking our entire sixth grade for a day of STEM activities, which was really a function of getting that venue so that we could accommodate all these students. Because in the past, when it was at Bridgewater, we could only take 30 students. So we are actively planning, it's quite a big event for over 800 students. Someone put me on that committee, I'm not exactly sure who. But it's been great, actually, because there are leaders from the community, there are leaders from business, thanks. It's a big undertaking, but I think it's going to be incredible. And one of the things that's exciting is our eighth grade robotics team will be one of the presenters, presenting to the younger students. And I know Paul Sharmentier is also involved and he'll be having some of his high school kids doing some of the presentations for the sixth graders as well. So it's definitely actively on our radar. As the new science standards prepare to be released, we've been talking a lot about the engineering and design process. And last week when I met with sixth grade, we were talking actively about how to incorporate some of these math concepts into the science classroom as a way to reinforce them because we know that they go together. And in the new standards, they're called cross-cutting concepts and they overlap. So, yes, we are talking about it a lot and making plans.
We'll look forward to hearing more about June 5th as it approaches.
Yes, it's going to be great.
Thank you.
I just want to thank them for being so proactive and Amy as well, but just to be proactive in trying to realign to the Common Core because it's pretty complex and it's, and the shift is, you know, takes a lot of hard work. We had hard work before, we have hard work now in the change process and there will be more hard work. But having talked to some of our colleagues, even in the area or across the state, there are many districts who are not where we are when it comes to shifting to the Common Core. And, you know, without these two working at it, we wouldn't be there either. So their proactive approach, we get, jump right on it. We have a lot of stuff going on in the summer, thanks to the support, the financial support of me for that type of curriculum work and Amy's leadership. So we're in better shape than most, although there's a boatload of work in front of us. But I know some others are really in not such a hot position to, to, to get realigned. And it's going to come around when, you know, we're experimenting with PARC, where we've been elected to experiment with PARC in the spring. So are you taking geometry this year? Okay, good. So you won't have to, you won't be one of the test cases for the future national assessments because just some of our geometry classes are so, were selected by the government for that. So there's a lot of work that's coming around, but they're very proactive and, as is Amy, so I want to just thank you for that work.
I'm always very thankful of all the support from all of you, so I can't say that enough.
Yeah, absolutely. And the building leadership of the principals because without them, we can't get any work done with the teachers, so. It really is a team effort.
It is very much so.
Team, we keep doing that tonight. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to school committee appointments. We'll start with the delegate to the Mass Convention. Ms. Lord, I know that you have normally served in that role as the delegate, so I would love it if you would agree to continue that this year.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Four, five, thank you. We want to make sure you are, you know, you're in agreement with this, Bev. Okay, so Bev's our delegate. Now, our budget subcommittee. I know we haven't gotten to the policy subcommittee, but I know Bev and Tina have worked on it in the past. I'm hoping that they will continue, but I'm saying this as a, you know, in anticipation of this budget subcommittee. Wondering if Steve and Bruce would like to be on the subcommittee and. Okay, great, so do I have a motion to?
I'll move the Bruce and Steve behind the budget subcommittee.
Okay, so all those in favor? Five zero.
Thank you.
And then the policy subcommittee. Tina and Bev, you've done such a great job on this, like, you know, compared to last year. So are you guys willing to take it on again?
I'd really want to make that one.
Go for it, Bruce.
Okay, do you have a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Students are wondering why. It can be a little tedious reviewing policies and making recommendations.
It's important, requires great attention to detail.
We have a former teacher and an attorney, so it works out perfect. So, thank you. All right, let's move on to the monthly FY14 budget update. Mr. Yukna.
Yes, you know, typically at this part of the year, the one thing that we get a little clarity to is the salary side of it, although I will say that, as you can see, we're still hiring physicians. So, you know, some of the funding you see as a differential right now, you know, will change as we move forward here. But I know I've got two positions on my side and obviously you know the negotiations with the Fed Director and a few other things. So $41,000 to the good really at this point with the budget on the salaries. When you look at the actual budget statement, you'll see, obviously, a real mix of numbers all the way through. And as you know, when we're in a year of negotiating salaries, the funds don't get put into the right lines as we're doing it. So that's, you're going to see a swing all year round. What I can tell you though is based on how we had budgeted, we were virtually, you know, right on the number. I think the differential was about $6,000. So, you know, kudos to the group for getting it done, but it was, it was very close in the end on that side of it. As far as the expense side, again, it's, it's a very early stage in which to really get this from. So, you know, we're only showing a very small amount on one line that we know we've made, you know, a couple of lines, we've made some adjustments on both ways. And so really at $43,000, very similar to last year. At the same time, we were about $41,000 last year at the same time. So I think we're kind of on track to, you know, have a good budget and no real big surprises that we're seeing at this point. Also, you need to remember that in our budget process, something that's been kind of baked into the budget for years now is that we have to make up $125,000 off of retirements and changes that we are hiring. And again, that was very close, but we, we were able to make that up as well through the process. So overall, that, that all worked out very well for us. Couple of the concerning areas that we're obviously watching. Fuel expense through something that we really didn't anticipate, which was a tax increase, you know, that we were hit by the state on. And obviously, fuel costs have been a little higher this year, although we, we kind of edged ourselves up in our budget. So we're very close on that. So we're hoping that that at least will stay kind of neutral at this point. The food service budget, you know, when I wrote this just a little while ago, I didn't have some of the information I'll be sharing with you today, but one of the things I will say there is that the, you know, this is an area that we took a very big hit last year on because of the participation within, you know, the food service program. Fortunately, we're seeing a very different trend this year, but it really pretty much wiped out all of our reserves. So again, we need to kind of move this thing forward. And we do have, you know, expenses outside of just producing it. We also have all the equipment that we have to maintain. So an area for us to watch. Few of our grants, anything that has anything to do with federal and state grants is, you know, under scrutiny right now. And we're, on the 240 grant, we're about $23,000 less than last year and less than what we were budgeting because we were kind of flat. And on the 274, we're just under $9,000 short in the grants. Again, we'll have to make that up with some of our budget moves.
Those are both special education grants.
I was just going to ask you for that, people at home, can you tell us?
Yes, they're special education grants.
Thank you.
So I think overall, I mean, I'm very comfortable with where we are with the budget. No surprises. And again, having the majority of our staff in place right now is, is a good thing, so.
All right, so we need a motion to accept this budget summary. Do I have one?
I will make a motion to accept the budget summary presented.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Quick question, just on the food participation. Just remind me, are we seeing more students opting in?
Yeah, I was going to do it under oath, but I can do it here quickly. Last year for the month of September, we, we saw about $62,000 in revenue. And this year, we're at about $83,000 for the same period of time. of time. So, I think a lot of the changes, obviously, that Allison was ma, able to do with the program overall, um, bringing salad bars in through the entire district, uh, has made a huge change, all the way down to the elementary level. Um, high school getting some of the things that they were looking for relative to the smoothies and the, the, you know, actual ability to create real pizza, uh, things like that back within the program, um, you know, has made a big difference as well. And on the middle school, again, all that rolling out as well, the smoothies and the, and the salad bars and, and, you know, the, the food choices, I think, being more consistent, a little bit more programmed, seems to be making a very big difference. And I think, you know, when, if you walk in, I, I try to come through the buildings as regularly as I can, and I go through the different cafeteria things. And, and you can really see that it's, it's definitely gotten, uh, you know, much better reviews, I think, from the, the students and the staff.
That's very good news, because I remember where we were a year ago.
Yeah. It was tough.
Yeah, so to give you guys an update, a year ago, the federal government, as you may know, put in a lot of, um, strict guidelines that we hadn't been used to, so that's why the portions were so small and came back to school last year and there were, it wasn't that we wanted that, it's just that we had to keep with that. They loosened up a little bit, but that's why you see we've made a tremendous effort to try to provide food that you want to eat as well as will buy. So how are we doing so far?
I think it's doing really good, yeah.
Doing all right?
This year, definitely. It's like just seeing the improvements in like the smoothies and like you said with the pizzas and stuff and the salad bar, that's, everyone loves it.
Yeah, that, the salad bar is great. And it's, it's people that sit here at the table that vote the money to buy the pizza oven and the other improvements that we're trying to make. So, any feedback you have for us, we're always willing to take, because ultimately we want healthy food, but that you'll actually eat and it tastes good.
I know everyone is really pleased with the new improvements.
Grateful. Keep us posted.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Okay, so, um, any other further questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of accepting the budget as presented? Five zero. Thank you. Okay, MSBA update. Yes, I'm gonna let Bill give you the details, but as, as you know, uh, we have waited months and months for the final MSBA, um, estimate sign-off, and it's been, as you know, we've had many updates, it's been really, really hard, um, to get the final, um, review in and to get their feedback. And so, we do want to thank, before we forget, Bill's gonna go over all the details, but we do want to thank Representative Jay Barrows because we had heard that they had a report that they would get to us, and that's been a few months now, and we were struggling to get it along with the final assessment. And, um, Bill got in touch with Jay to see if he could help us nudge, intervene. He did, and here we have it. So, we want to thank him, he's always very supportive, he's always there when we need him, at Taylor this morning, but mostly, he helped us with this last week, so very appreciated. Bill, turn it over to you.
Okay, um, the basic, uh, I think takeaway from this whole thing is, is that they've changed their process pretty tremendously. Um, in the old days, they would award you a grant amount and pretty much if you did the program, you got the grant amount. Um, you know, few exceptions, but not that much. This, this round now, and we were, as you'll notice in the letter, we were one of the first ones to go under the new, uh, provisions, and, and they kept morphing over the three years as we were doing it, because I think, uh, they were again, were trying to figure out their way through the way this process should work. Um, so it was never a, a point where either Paul Jackson before me or myself could actually know what they were thinking and what they were doing and how they were going to change it. Um, in the end, um, what we ended up doing is obviously fighting for every cent that we could, um, and having to double and triple document things and, and, and I think although it was a struggle, uh, I think we did very well.
Thank you for your persistence.
Well, it's, it's my taxpayers' money as well, so. Um, the, the thing here that I think you, you, you really kind of read in the last, uh, you know, second to the last line in the third paragraph is that, you know, we executed about one point two million dollars in change orders. Um, that's part of the contingency money that we would carry in a project like this, you know, because there are things that we're not sure are gonna happen. Um, one example was we were very nervous about the pricing originally, um, on the overall project. Uh, we were very fortunate that the, the bid economy was excellent, um, but one of the things we had left out as an example was, uh, you know, re-tiling the entire bathrooms of all the bathrooms. We had done portions of them because again, it's a big ticket item. Um, so there was about two hundred thousand dollars there alone that we got the state to, to agree, um, that they would fund. But there was a number of different situations like that throughout the thing. And again, um, I think the building committee and the school administration took the same tact all the way through. Whatever we could do to make the building as good as we possibly could to last, uh, the next twenty to twenty-five years was the direction we wanted to go. Um, we'd, like I said, uh, one point two million dollars, uh, we equaled about nine percent of the overall, uh, funding. Um, we got about seven point, uh, oh seven percent of it, and as they're saying, uh, most of the communities around us have only gotten about three point seven percent of that. So, um, I think we did very well. I had a range, as I, I said to Deb a while ago, uh, the minimum I knew we would get, uh, was around two hundred and thirty-two thousand more, uh, from where we stood at that point in time. I thought the maximum was about five hundred and fifty thousand, and in the end, what this document tells you is we got five hundred and four. So, uh, we got very close to the maximum, uh, that we could have gotten out of it in that process.
Say that one more time.
Um, we had expected anywhere from two thirty-two to five hundred and, to five hundred and fifty, and we ended up with five hundred and four, uh, additional funding, uh, into the end here. So, again, uh, within, uh, less than a couple hundred thousand dollars of the total possible that you could get on a project like this, including all of our contingencies.
That is an excellent job, Bill, um, on your part, from where we were, where we thought we were gonna be, with Jay's help and Deb's and everybody else, but, you know, we owe you thanks for, uh, bird dogging that. You did a great job.
Very persistent.
Well, I, and I think the, you know, from my perspective, the fact that, uh, you know, Deb and, and you guys supported the whole process is what makes it work, because I could be out there shouting if, if, uh, I wasn't getting people to agree and sign off on things, we wouldn't have gotten too far with it. So, um, you know, I think overall, it was, it was well worth it, um, very frustrating at times, but, uh, happy to at least got this one done, so.
Well, I think, you know, your example about the tiles in the bathroom was a way that we were trying to be conservative in our approach to this project, and didn't really seem to make sense to have varying colors, you know, because it's so outdated and we couldn't get, you know, to, to make a, a bathroom to really look the way it should. Um, so, uh, and that was, you know, also thanks to you, Bill. So, I think this is amazing, of course, this is what jumped out on, uh, to me when I was reading this. So, I think that people at home, uh, you know, it's important for them to understand and see that, you know, we've, uh, the team has been working very hard and, you know, the result is in these numbers, which is awesome, so. Yes, I'm happy with the end result. Yeah, very much. So, thank you. Great news, great news on that. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the generator.
That, by the way, um, there is a document that, that needs to be signed off. There's about half a dozen of us in town that have to sign it, uh, as part of this, which is an acceptance.
Okay.
To this final audit, uh, report, and, uh, you know, so, you know, basically, I would say that you probably have to agree as a committee to accept the final audit.
Oh, okay. So we need a motion then to accept the final audit dated October first, and the amounts listed. Okay, so do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Five zero. Okay, so then I'll sign off on it when you let me know. Okay, great.
We have it with us.
I think we have it with us. Oh, okay.
They gave us a ten day window.
No pressure. No, no pressure. We want to sign off so that when, then the money comes to us. That's really when the project ends. Yes, and the school committee has agreed, so that's great. Okay. Um, acceptance of donation, oh no, I'm sorry, generator bid funding.
At our last meeting, um, I explained to you that we had gone out through the RFP process, um, had three bidders in the process, the, um, to replace, or actually not replace, to install a generator at the Taylor School, the only facility that we have that does not have, uh, backup power. And the, the prices ranged pretty significantly from two hundred and fifteen thousand down to a hundred and thirty-three thousand. Um, the, in this particular installation, as I said before, this would be the only building in the entire town that can run one hundred percent, uh, in the case of an emergency. And I think that's, it's centrally located, um, it's got a good distribution of, of, uh, space within it. Um, so from the town's point of view, uh, in those rare occasions when we really need it, uh, it's, it's gonna be a good location to have, probably better than the borough because it is more centrally located. Uh, and secondary, uh, to that really is that, well, not secondary, probably primary actually, is that, you know, it really is a life safety, uh, issue. So when we're in school, whether it's extended day all the way through, um, the school day or, um, you know, you know, in any kind of a need sense, we now at least have that facility covered, just like we have all the other schools covered. So I think it's, it's kind of an important step. Uh, but again, we had only put away about a hundred and ten thousand dollars out of last year's, uh, budget process to, uh, do this. We had obviously CIP approval, uh, through the process as well, and the, um, and anything over, you know, twenty-five thousand, you have to go through that process. So we had already gone through all that. Um, the hundred and thirty-three thousand, while more than what we were hoping, um, I've looked through all of our revolving accounts, um, and it's been one of the issues that, um, you know, we've been trying to do. I've been working with, uh, with you and Deb to start to reduce down those revolving accounts to levels that, that, you know, I think are reasonable to keep, um, and, and use them in, in appropriate areas. So far, um, over the last two years, uh, we've helped fund the track renovation a hundred percent out of our own side of it. That was sixty-two thousand dollars. We have put up money towards the new camera systems, about fifty thousand is coming directly out of our revolvers. Um, we've put up seventy-five thousand to finish the turf and, and baseball fields side of things. Um, so this is another twenty-seven thousand that we need to, to pull from those accounts. And the only two accounts in revolving, the, the problem with, with our revolving accounts is they all have specific purposes and uses, so you can't, even though you might have a better balance in another account, you can't just use it. Uh, so we really only have two accounts that we could probably pull this money from comfortably and legally, um, and the two of them would be, um...
You can do whatever you want as a committee.
Just give me a little guidance here. With a lawyer next to me, I figured I'd better do that one. So, the extended day, and the reason you can use extended day is because of the benefit, um, that they obviously would get from this as well. The Taylor School is one of our, our sites, we have four sites for extended day. Um, and then obviously building rental has probably got the most open capability. Um, I, in this particular case, you know, I'm gonna suggest that we go out of the, uh, extended day program, uh, for the twenty-seven thousand, two fifty, and, uh, that will give us enough to fund this entire process and, and get it moving forward.
But this also, it would be a benefit for the entire community, because that's one of our emergency shelters, so it's not serving just the...
Well, it hasn't been an emergency shelter, but will be now.
Because of the lack of a generator.
Right. Because without a generator before, there was really virtually no way to use it, so.
It's a lot closer to our elderly housing. I know when we had the power outage and we had to move a lot of people over to the borough.
It's not just a school benefit.
Exactly.
So if we, if, if the committee is able to do this, I think our town emergency management group, which we do meet with regularly, would be very interested in shifting their plans from borough over to Taylor as a more ideal location. It just hasn't been an option.
So we need a motion to take twenty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars out of the extended day revolving account?
Uh-huh, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, um, and it's, we certainly have enough in the projected balance.
Yes.
Yes.
So, uh, of, just for folks at home, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars, so. All right, so any other further discussion on that? All those in favor?
No.
Five zero. Okay.
Now, you also have to vote to accept the low bidder.
That's right.
At a hundred and thirty-three thousand.
So do I have a motion to accept the low bidder of Barnaby Corporation?
Steve wanted to make that motion, didn't he, Steve?
A motion that, uh, as, as presented, we accept the bid for the generator from, um, the, uh, Barnaby, uh, Barnaby Corporation.
And I'll second Steve's motion.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Thank you, Bill, for bringing forth, uh, this additional information so that the school committee can make their decision, make their, make their vote tonight. Okay, acceptance of donations, always a great agenda item. Yes, so we have one that you've heard before and one that you haven't actually. So I'll do the one that you haven't first. Um, the River Community Church, Four Square Church of Foxborough on Mechanic Street, has donated, um, two hundred and fifty dollars to the Igoe School, and as you know, many of our religious organizations do social service, community outreach. So, Pastor Justin Campbell from the River Community Church, um, would like to make the donation to the Igoe School in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars. This is the first time that the community church has donated to the schools, and they would like the funds to be used for supplies in the nurse's office, including extra clothing items for children that are sometimes needed, as well as miscellaneous medical supplies. So it's a really nice, uh, social service outreach to the schools, and, uh... And who's making the donation again, please? The River Community Church on Mechanic Street. Okay, well, thank you to the River Community Church for their generosity. Do I have a motion to accept the donation?
I'll move to accept the donation of two hundred and fifty dollars.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Okay.
With gratitude, with much gratitude.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Thank you. Very, many thanks to the River Community Church. We'll be sending them as we do a letter confirming that the donation was accepted and thanking them. Um, the second one you heard about last year, um, and I'm gonna turn it over to Bill because it's in, um, one of his operational items, but if you remember, we had a donation of car seats from a company, brand new car seats. That saves us from purchasing, um, car seats that are appropriate developmentally for children, and, um, I'll turn it over to Bill, but we had another donation of six booster seats, so.
Yeah, and, and these, as you can imagine, we have, um, a number of, of kids, especially in the, um, special needs area, that were transporting early, uh, early intervention programs and stuff like that. And having the appropriate equipment, well, as well as, um, obviously replacing it on a regular basis, um, is very important. So, uh, this group has, you know, uh, last couple of years when Dennis has called them, basically to try to order, has generously donated, um, the six seats themselves.
Should've read it right. It's the Dorel, how do you pronounce it? D-O-R-E-L, Dorel Juvenile Group, um, on Forbes Boulevard in Foxborough, and it's Dan Diaz.
Yep.
And they're, they're approximately seventy dollars per seat, so this is a really generous donation.
This is awesome.
So it's worked out very well, and, and again, it gives us the opportunity to replace older equipment with newer stuff and, and really, you know, transport.
And to make sure children fit properly.
Right.
In with the, with the equipment, so.
That's great.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we accept that donation.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
With much gratitude.
Five zero. Thank you. Thank you. Lot of generous individuals and companies out there. Absolutely wonderful. All right, so now we're gonna move on to other matters. I always have at least one, and I only have one this time, so I will limit myself.
Is this not a record?
Don't have to limit yourself. I'll limit myself to one.
Are you sure?
No, because I haven't finished thinking. But, um, uh, this is a really good one. So we talked about the tech plan at the last meeting, and we talked about having some community input, and thanks to the committee and a contact I made last year, we actually have four people who have stepped forward that would like to meet with us, um, to have a, a meeting where we, they look at our first draft of the tech plans. We have four people, but also we're willing to have more people than the four. So Bill, Amy, Paul Borlatti, and I will be meeting with the community interest group on Wednesday, October sixteenth, from seven to eight-thirty PM in the Igoe School Library Media Center. And we'd like people to enter through the superintendent's office, but we would like to know how many people to expect. So if you are...
Through the superintendent's office?
Yes, so if you are someone who is interested in seeing our tech plan and commenting on it and helping us improve our first draft with comments or any kind of input, then please email me or Jana Gracea at the superintendent's office, or just call the superintendent's office and put your name on the list, and I'll send you the email with specifics, and I'll send the people the, the draft plan to look at. So we have four great people who are interested in coming, and we're gonna start with that. This is not the group that is on the tech steering committee that will be an ongoing input, but this is our, um, step as we outlined in the process last spring, during the summer and last meeting, where, um, we've had the administrative team reviewed it last week at the admin team meeting, and we're gonna continue at our next meeting. Um, the tech steering committee got a look at it today, and I'll let Amy talk about what they're gonna do in a minute. And then our third step, well, actually, our first step was school committee, then administrative team, tech steering committee, uh, on the October sixteenth in the evening will be our community input, and as always, um, we'll continue from there. So I don't know if you wanted to say a little bit about what the tech steering committee is doing.
Sure, so we worked a lot on the action steps and things as a committee last year, and as you heard at the last meeting, we're really a big part of the sustainability part of the plan. And that group takes this very seriously. So we were looking at it today as far as what data can we go and collect that are things that are on the timeline for this year. And depending on the grade level, whether it's elementary, middle, or high, different people in the committee are bringing that information back to the group, so we can have baseline data on some of the things and more current, up-to-date data. So it, it was nice just hearing, at the end, we were kind of dismissing the group around five fifteen. One of the members came up to me and apologized for coming in for a few minutes late, because he had to be at two different meetings at the same time. And he said, "But I just love this committee, and I want to make sure that I'm able to stay on this one at the same time, because I really think what we're doing is important." And I think that that, that really says a lot. So you've got people that are really trying to go between a couple different places, but they see that it's important and want to be a part of it.
That's great.
That's great.
Great team.
So anyone who's interested in providing community input, give us a call, and I'll, I'll send information from there.
Great.
Thank you. Onward.
Okay, Bev?
I have one. The school committee received a thank you note with two cups of coffee on the outside, and the inside says, "Thanks a latte. Thank you so much for the gift certificate to the yarn shop. It is so nice to have the time to get back to doing things that I really enjoy. It was great to see you at the last meeting. Thanks for everything. Wendy."
It's from Wendy Wills.
Wendy Wills.
Wendy, if you're watching, do you miss the meetings?
I like that, "if you're watching."
Right, I'm not so sure.
Anyone else?
Yeah, she's knitting. She's knitting while she's watching, yes.
Our next meeting is the twenty-first, correct? Let me look, because I always keep the calendar.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, yes, I thought, I just wanted to confirm that.
You're going to be a great help to me at these meetings, yes, the next meeting is the twenty-first.
Okay. I will not be at that next meeting, unfortunately, but I think that.
You'll be moving to the left.
You need to, you need to make sure you're here.
I guess we should remind the public that we have a professional development day, as we talked about earlier.
That's right. Oh, that's good.
And Monday off after that.
The school Friday and Monday off.
It's Friday's professional development day, so you have your children on Friday.
Joe, do you have a question?
The committee know that the MCAS scores came back, and they, all the parent guardian reports are already sent home in the mail.
Yes.
As we've gone since the last few years, we'll be doing an overview at the next meeting. Then November fourth, we'll do the second overview, then we'll do the baseline and benchmark report. And are we doing a district report card this year?
Not till January. Or December or January, not with all that, because there's too many very detailed reports. So yes, Dr. Burdles will be doing exactly those three that you said.
Yep, and then the two at the November fourth, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Joe.
Remembers everything, so good memory. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Always important to see you next meeting. Ramya, I cannot believe you just arrived last year, because I saw you at so many events and so many activities last year that I, when you said this is your second year in Foxborough, I was amazed, because I feel like I've seen you everywhere. So, you know, you've made quite an impact on the school in your participation in such a short time. I was in awe, so we'll be seeing you guys everywhere. And both of you, I know, are in the vocal groups, which I so enjoy, so keep that up. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, so no, no other matters? Then I'll, Amy?
I just wanted to thank Tina and Steve for participating. I know we talked about it earlier, on the, the search committee. It was a lot of information in three very long evenings, and I really appreciate you taking the part. It really shows, when she was talking about the team, when you have two school committee members, it really does show the solidarity.
Yes.
I can't speak for Steve, but I, I know I learned a lot from the educators that were on the committee about our special education programs, and it was a great experience for me, so thank you for having me.
It's made my job a lot easier, I'll tell you. I'm all in favor of our process.
I do think our process is rigorous, as Steve mentioned earlier. But I do think, but I do think the results speak for themselves, so thank you, you guys, thank you for doing it.
The results have brought us Debbie, have brought us Amy, have brought us Bill, have brought us all kinds of wonderful people.
The student reps can't motion to adjourn, can they?
No, they really can't. But they like to.
I'll look, I'll entertain a motion from one of the school committee members to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?